All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you everyone for joining tonight. This is a hybrid meeting. We are live here at the Sheriff Center at fifty-two hundred SoCal Avenue. And also online. So Jamie Sehorn, analyst for the first district will be helping to manage the online audience. Jamie giveaway. Thank you. And we also have Metro here today, John Ergo, our planning director at Metro. It's live as well as the our consultant team that is working on the reimagine Metro campaign. There is so much great stuff happening at Metro that we won't have a town hall tonight just focused on the transit district. The last town hall meeting that I hosted, we talked a lot about housing and of course, housing and transportation are intimately connected. And the timing is great because we are in the middle of this process at Metro with the reimagine Metro campaign. We're really drilling down into the different routes and seeing how we can optimize them to create the best service possible for the community. So I'm just going to give a little bit of an overview about all the great things happening at the district. And then we'll get into a little bit more of the specifics around the reimagine Metro campaign. There'll be plenty of time at the end for you guys to ask questions about anything you see here in the presentation. We have some boards and other information here for people who are in person. And then I'm also happy to answer questions about anything you don't see in the presentation by the things going on in the first district or the county. So Metro's goals are pretty simple. Double ridership within the next five years to seven million trips per year. Never buy another tailpipe. That means all zero emission buses so that Metro does its part to really help drive the transformation to zero emissions in our transportation sector, which if you just look low at locally creates actually about half of all the emissions for our community. And the third goal is to add one hundred and sixty units of housing on metro owned property. And I'm excited to say we're making a great progress on all three of these. But I do sit on the board of the Metropolitan Transit Agency or Santa Cruz Metro. As a supervisor, I sit on ten other boards and agencies and commissions. And I think right now Metro might be the most exciting other agency that I'm a part of. And that's because people are handing us thirty-eight million dollar checks. Can't say that about every agency. So this is from the California Department of Transportation, Toques Omashekin, the director handing us a check for thirty-eight million dollars as part of the TERCIT program that's Transit and Inner City Rail Capital Program. And Metro was a huge winner this year. It's the first time I think that we've ever applied for this program with Metro. Typically, it's something that the transportation, regional transportation commission applies for. But we applied and went big between a little bit of lobbying in Sacramento and you know, really, I think a great project. We won this incredible grant to buy. I think at this point it was in the twenty twenty-four or something hydrogen buses as well as additional funding to build a hydrogen fueling station. And also to support the construction of a couple of housing projects on metro property, including Pacific Station, which you see us standing there at there. So that was on April twenty-seventh. And the good times have continued to roll. On July third, we got noticed that the US Department of Transportation had awarded Metro another twenty point four million dollars. And with that award, we're able to increase our total order for hydrogen buses to fifty-four. And then between the previous state award I mentioned and some some other sources, be able to acquire a total of nine electric battery electric buses, four of which are already in operation. So that means that within the next twenty-four twenty-four months or so, certainly by twenty twenty-seven, will reach sixty percent of the entire metro fleet will be zero emission buses, which is pretty astounding. We it'll actually mean that Santa Cruz has the largest fleet of hydrogen buses of any entity in the nation. The the various awards have also helped move along the Watsonville Station redesign, which would have about sixty units of housing. Power more than halfway towards the total funding we need to construct this project. And of course, I'm sure you've heard about Pacific Station North. This is redevelopment of the station at on Pacific Avenue in Santa Cruz, really the metro's largest station. And you can see that it will primarily have the boarding of the rather than right now where buses move all the way through from a front to Pacific Avenue, the buses will just access the station off of Front Street. There'll be housing and mixed use commercial on the first floor. And really, if you're on Pacific's Avenue, you'll see that there's you won't immediately feel to see that it's a I mean, other than the awesome sign that it's a bus stop, but you won't see buses pulling in right from there. And then there's two parts to this project across Maple Alley, which is, as you can see rendered here, but also Pacific Station South. Combined, I think this is about roughly a hundred and twenty units. And then sixty units at Watsonville Station. So Metro is well on its way to exceeding its goal of a hundred and sixty total units on metro owned property. Of course, we need a way to get between these two stations. And one common complaint is that we see the bus stuck in traffic on Highway One along with all the other cars. So we are making strides to correct that. I'm I'm sure you've all noticed Highway One under construction now. This is the first of a three-phase project to add an auxiliary lane and bus on shoulder lane to the highway between SoCal Drive and ultimately to Freedom Boulevard. It'll also add this bike and pedestrian over crossing. This is what you see under construction now with this. Driving these these large pilings and making the structure for and then there will be other bike and pedestrian over crossings in the other phases as well. Capitola Avenue Bridge will be rebuilt to be more bike and pedestrian friendly wider sidewalks and an actual bike lane there. There'll be a crossing at Mar Vista in Aptos. And then the two, the the rail trail segment twelve that goes through Aptos Village will also provide two more crossings over the highway for bikes and pedestrians. So as I mentioned, there's a bus on shoulder component to this entire project. The bus will have an exclusive lane between one exit and the next entrance at really every entrance exit along this segment that we're redeveloping. So that'll give the bus a little boost. It'll share the auxiliary lane with cars for the other segments. Those cars, of course, are really just you know, either through traffic, someone using to go, for example, from SoCal Drive to forty-first or trying to get off at the next exit. So hopefully it'll be moving a little bit better there. We can also, of course, as we to go back to this slide, as we build the auxiliary lane, which is the lane all the way over here on the right. We are still also building a new shoulder. So there is the potential to expand the bus on shoulder project to for the bus to run in the shoulder in the future. That would be a next phase of the project and something that we'll be talking about soon at the Regional Transportation Commission. I expect it Metro too. So if we are, if once we complete that, we'll have a partial dedicated facility for transit on the highway in the coming years and the potential to create a completely dedicated facility for transit so that it does not get stuck in traffic at all. In case you're wondering, the highway schedule here, the first phase of this project, SoCal the forty-first, as you know, under construction anticipated to be under construction through twenty twenty-five. And there's actually the next phase of the project, which is about to go under construction will certainly start before the end of this year. Going from State Park Drive, I'm sorry, from Bay Porter Exit in Capitola to State Park Drive. So more construction to come. And then phase three of the project, which goes from State Park to Freedom are trying to finalize the funding for but we are hopeful that we'll close some state grants in the next couple of years to finish that. But wait, there's more. So Cal Drive, some of you may have noticed this is the Farm Park. And there's some tractors there. A lot of folks have reached out to my office saying, what is happening at Farm Park? Are you building something there? Answer is actually no. It's simply being used for staging equipment for this project. So Cal Drive buffered bike lane and congestion mitigation project. Will go from Harbor High all the way to State Park Drive in Aptos. And so this the Farm Park location is ideal because publicly owned and relatively in the middle of the entire project. Sidebar about Farm Park, we have applied for state grants a couple of times on this space and not gotten any. However, we do have a you know, besides the long-term ultimate plan for that part. There is something that we plan to move forward with after the construction is done. Also, this will be probably at the end of twenty twenty-four for the SoCal Drive project. We're going to start fundraising for some bike jumps there, similar to the post office jumps that were closed to make way for the Aptos Village project. So that will be, you'll have a green bike lane running all along SoCal Drive and some bike jumps to to stop off at and enjoy on the way. Now, again, the bike lanes made the title here as far as the project goes, but it will also be a huge boon for the Metro on this SoCal Drive corridor. And that's because twenty I think it's twenty-one new signals will be installed. Smart smart lights so that the lights and the buses can talk to each other. And if the light sees the bus coming, it'll turn green faster or yeah, turn green faster or stay green longer to ensure that the bus gets through that light. And then there's also more to come as far as additional improvements that Metro is planning to make to the corridor. Things like in island or sorry, in lane boarding islands just to make it easier for people to get on and off the the bus faster. So don't have any renderings of that yet, but hopefully soon, John promises me by September. So stay tuned. But yeah, traffic will be moving a lot better through here. Thanks to all those timed lights. And it will also be a safe way to get around on on bikes. We are also moving forward to replace the last stop sign that's on SoCal Drive there at Robertson Road. The county is currently in planning for that and designing the project. And then we're going applying for a funding source with our local transportation commission here before the end of the year. So all those projects are pretty that I've just mentioned are are large infrastructure projects. But at Metro, we also want to do as much as we can in the short term. So one of the first things we heard, just going out and talking to people and especially to a lot of students was that they'd love to be able to ride the bus for free. You know, a lot of time they just don't have the fare in their pocket. But you know, their parents might be late for work and tell them to go jump on the bus. Long story short, we've implemented this just a few months ago that youth ages or pretty much up through high school can board the bus, which is showing a school ID. And I think we've seen what youth ridership double just since this program. Two hundred and fifty percent increase in youth riding the bus. So it's just really phenomenal. And I have to say, I think of all of the policies that I've been involved in, this is the one where I had the most people coming up to me and say, thank you for creating this program. I can't tell you how great it is. They just be able to tell my kid, you know, my kids actually tell me, hey, mom, I'm going downtown or I'm going to meet my friends at the boardwalk. And I'm taking the bus. So really, a great step forward. Of course, I'm sure you've also noticed all the wraps of beautiful photography on the buses. This is part of the one ride at a time campaign. The images were created by our local Mr. Franz Lanting. He's a National Geographic photographer and world renowned, just wrote a book with his wife called Bay of Life, beautiful book. I suggest you take a look at it. I have it at bookshop Santa Cruz. And we partnered with Franz and his wife Chris Extrum to on this on this Bay of Life with their Bay of Life Foundation to use their photography to wrap the buses and really highlight the fact that you know, your emissions are way lower or even zero when you ride the bus compared to a personal automobile. And there's really nothing better you could do for the environment. So part of this program is that if you track your rides, every twenty-five rides, you get an extra, you get ten dollars, which you can donate to the Bay of Life Foundation or to the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary Foundation. And we've also created a way for Metro vendors to donate a share of their contract back to either of those nonprofits, which generously they have done. A couple of them have already done. And then I really love the fact that it's this whole program highlights the fact that you can take the bus to many of the amazing scenic places in our community, including Big Basin. I will, the bus is running on weekends until September tenth. And that brings me to the reimagine Metro campaign, which is, you know, again, something we're looking at both in the short term and the long term. And this came about because we'd heard, you know, well, first of all, there is less service than in the past due to budget cuts back in twenty sixteen. The service has been cut twenty to thirty percent. Thirty percent since two thousand and five. So how do we really come back effectively from that and provide the best possible service to the community? We also consistently hear that there's not enough, the buses are empty, the infrequent buses require long waits and it's funny because that buses tend to be either not enough people or too many people. UCSE actually accounts for the not the majority of ridership, a huge share. It's like forty to fifty percent. Fifty-five percent. So the actual majority of all ridership on the metro system. And so the bus is going up to UCS, he can easily have forty students on it and we sometimes have to pass up students because there's so many people waiting. Meanwhile, there's buses that are running empty in other parts of our community or with just, you know, four people an hour on average. And you know, we know that we could be using those buses better. We also know that people some don't ride the bus because this current system is difficult to understand. You know, it's difficult to understand how to get from A to B. We've got a admittedly complicated numbering system that includes As and Ws and everything in between. And buses are sometimes slow and unreliable with wait times that, you know, are not immediately obvious. So the public is, most of all, the public has told us that they're ready for a change. So that's what we're doing. So we're looking really at what we can do immediately, you know, as immediate as any public agency can move, but we can do this year. And then what we can do in the future, given more resources. So the project team, which is Jarrett Walker and Associates, a really amazing group that has recently redesigned the service in Monterey County as well as many other places. And they've developed two alternatives for us to look at in the short term. Both provide more service, a ten percent increase overall, higher frequency in areas with higher demand, simpler and more direct routes, especially in Watsonville, and better transfers, which means shorter waits if you have to move move from one bus bus to another. With no second pair. Before I show you the routes, you know, a couple more of the kind of theological underpinnings of this. The first is that we know that on transit, travel time includes every part of your trip. It's the time it takes to get to the bus stop. The time that you spend waiting for the bus, the time you spend actually riding the bus. If you have to make a transfer, you got to wait in between. And then you may have to walk to your destination at the end. So this approach to designing these alternatives, you're going to see really took this into account and you know how we can look at shortening every element of riding transit, every piece of writing transit. Another thing we looked at is how to maximize access to destinations. So here's a person, let's call her Suzie. Suzie lives in the city of Santa Cruz or the county of Santa Cruz. And of course, there's services sprinkled throughout our community. Whether it's coffee shops, banks, grocery stores, gyms. But she needs to get to them. And there's only like so many places that she can get in a reasonable amount of time. Let's say forty-five minutes, she can access a different amount of those services, depending on how far she can get within forty-five minutes. You know, she might be able to go farther west than she can east because of more frequent transit service or just, you know, better roads. And so the geography of the city as well as the transit network or her access to other types of transportation really affect what services she can access within a reasonable amount of time. So this is a pretty much a simplification of the modeling that went into developing these routes. So now I'll just give you a quick look at the two alternatives. This is alternative A, which leans towards greater frequency for Metro. And John, you want to come up here and explain a little bit more of the detail around turn of A and B and you know, also something in between.
You're doing great. Thanks. Definitely could be alternate planning director for Metro. So we basically, again, John Ergo, planning and development director with Santa Cruz Metro. So we've through this process developed two alternatives, the two alternatives that we've taken to the public this summer for feedback on. And we're here today. There's a survey you can take. It's open till August fifteenth. The first alternative leans towards more frequency on our major corridors. And in this map, red are the most frequent routes that run every fifteen minutes. The darker blue is every thirty minutes. And the lighter blues every sixty minutes. Currently, there are no routes that run every fifteen minutes anywhere in the metro network. And this this alternative proposes to implement two of them. The eighteen and nineteen are current metro routes and they would be, the frequency would be doubled on both of them running up to UCSC up to the campus from Pacific Station. And then extending east, there would be two routes, which we're calling the one and the two. And so just a sidebar in this plan is to get away from the sixty-nines and the AWs and the thirty-five Es and things like that. And the long-term vision is possibly ten routes, one through ten, the whole network done that way. We're starting with one, two, three. But these these one and two routes would be coming in every thirty minutes from Watsonville. And combining for a fifteen-minute frequency on Water Street into downtown. So the goal here is is to provide usable frequency. So people don't have to plan their whole day around taking the bus. In the second alternative, we do a lot of the same things, but we lean more towards coverage, meaning we just try to cover more areas of the district rather than reducing some coverage to get to that frequency and alternative A. And so in this alternative, we just have one route running every fifteen minutes up to the campus. That's the route eighteen. And that's the major. There are some other changes in Watsonville where we try to keep some more coverage on various streets. And the other part of this is we bring back a peak only ninety-one X, which we've heard a lot from outreach over the past couple of months that people want that more direct service between Watsonville and Santa Cruz. And I'll just, I'll let everyone here and online here in the room and online and a little bit secret and in in a secret, we've already kind of met the ten percent goal for September. So some of these changes, we're actually going to be working to implement this September. And then we've just raised the bar for December. So we're looking at another ten percent on top of that. And so when we come to the board in August, what we're likely going to present is some combination of A and B based on the the feedback that we've heard this summer that people like elements of both. And we actually think we have the resources to do more than we had originally planned. So stay tuned for that. We'll be before our board on August twenty-fifth, next Friday with kind of the final recommendations. That's where it says that. You want me to keep going?
I'm pretty much moving to the last slide. So
Okay.
If you don't go far, if there's some questions, I'm sorry. So yeah, as John was saying, the next steps are for the Metro Board to review this plan and select an alternative A or alternative B. And then September through November, we'll be implementing the whichever alternative is chosen, including publishing the new route schedules. And we'll also be doing work on a future network plan with additional changes that can go into effect in the future. And then actually, I guess the new routers wouldn't happen till beginning of next year. Is that right? December? Okay, so so either alternative or A or B would go into effect December twenty twenty-first. All right, on the solstice, right? Driving towards the light. And then early twenty twenty-four, we would finalize the future network plan that could be implemented, I think, really with more more resources. So that is I'll stop there and take questions on anything you see. And we'll start with any questions here in the in-person audience. And then we can move towards questions online. And if you are in the online audience and you want to ask a question, just go ahead and use the little reactions button at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand and we'll call on folks in order that they raise their hand. Yeah, let's go ahead and start hearing. Yes, because please speak into the mic so that folks online can hear you.
Yeah, I was just wondering why there was a more high-frequency route between what looked like Capitola and Cabrillo College or Aptos. Maybe I'm assuming because of the colleges there, but that's my question.
Just only speaking to the mic, you're good.
So two of the routes in this proposal mimic existing routes, the seventy-one and sixty-nine AW and its frequency between Capitola Mall, if that's what you're asking, up forty-first Avenue towards Cabrillo. And that purple you see there is a combined frequency between the one and two for about every ten to twenty minutes. And that is there because of Cabrillo College and the college.
I I like what we're doing with the either leaning towards frequency or leaning towards coverage and it makes sense to try to get more. I guess I personally like the frequency. What are we doing about making sure that the buses are on time at their destinations? I notice when I ride the bus a lot, the sixty-nine and the seventy-one, they often get stuck in traffic, even just on Capitola Road, SoCal Road. Is there anything being done about that to make sure that they are on time where they need to be? And alternatively, also going up to the campus, sometimes they do get stuck in the ten coming down, will get stuck in traffic during peak commute hours. Do we have plans for that?
Yes, we do. We have a parallel study, which Director Koenig kind of mentioned. It's called the Rapid Corridor Study. And we're wrapping that. We're going into outreach again this fall. And it's the first stage of it is focused on SoCal, really between SoCal and Water. Actually, that's not true. It's focused on these one and two corridors in their entirety. So all of SoCal between Pacific Station and Watsonville and Capitola to forty-first and in Main Street Freedom Airport Boulevard in Watsonville. And so it's looking at bus stop placement, implementing transit signal priority at every intersection that we operate through. Cue jumps where we can to get past traffic and through the intersection. It's creating some transit priority. Currently, there there really is no transit priority, dedicated transit lanes or space anywhere in the county. And so this would make some small steps towards getting there with the cue jumps, the transit signal priority. Bus stop consolidation and and new and in lane bus stops. So not currently, most of our bus stops, the bus has to pull out of traffic, wait to get back in, which can take a long time, but just even when there's no traffic, it adds time to pull in, pull out. When there is traffic, it can add minutes. And so the proposal that will bring in September is is to stop in lane to build new new bus stops that bolt out. And we're on the SoCal in conjunction with the SoCal buffered bike lanes, where the bike lane would actually go behind the bus stop. And so you're kind of protecting both the cyclists and the bus in its lane. So those first two corridors are are under study right now. It currently doesn't extend up to UCSC. But we'll likely try to add that in the next phase. The campus circulation is is really complicated. But one, one thing we may hope to do is have more of our buses start and stop on campus. And there'd be two-way travel. And so one of the issues on campus is you have students just trying to get partially around the loop, students coming on campus and students getting off. So three things happening at every bus at the same time. And if we can identify And if we can identify, work with UCSC to identify a place to actually stop, lay over the bus on campus, we can eliminate some of that conflict uh, and have bidirectional service. So you always know if I'm going on campus, I stand on this side of the street. If I'm coming on campus, I get off on this side. So those are some of the long-term. The, the first one, the plan is actually we have funding to implement the bus stop improvements on SoCal. So we're looking to do that by twenty in the next two years, I guess, two or three years.
And I, I'll add a couple more things. Um, I don't, I don't need the mics, I've got my computer. But um, the first is that we are I think either close to completing the automatic vehicle locator uh, system, so that all the buses will like, will know exactly where they are, how far they are behind, uh, if they are uh, running late. Um, and we're rolling out a lot more um, like ticker type uh, signage at the bus stop. So you know, it'll say your bus coming, you know, in three minutes, five minutes, et cetera. So that'll at least create a little bit more certainty um, around when your bus is coming. Um, and the other thing, oh yeah, as far as UCSC goes to improve service, um, we are purchasing ten articulated buses there. So basically double buses um, so that we stop having to pass people up for, because of capacity issues, and we'll just be able to move a lot more people with every bus that goes through. Yeah, right. John didn't, you didn't have the mics, I'll just repeat it for everyone, but um, yeah, so there's an intercr- you can check, we do have an app for Metro, you can see exactly where your bus is. Uh, and we also have recently completed an integration with Google Maps, which will tell you um, how far away your bus is, you know, five, ten minutes.
Hey, having lived forty years in San Francisco and thirty years here, how loud or how quiet are these buses since we live right off of the bus corridor? We bought thirty years ago, which because my husband commuted to Silicon Valley and it was just an easy commute.
Is your, your question like the new buses?
Yeah, the new buses and and what is the end time? What time do they start in the morning and what time do they stop at night? Is there a schedule? Do they stop at midnight or for all the people leaving the bars at uh, two AM in Capitola? Just, just wondering.
Well, we've heard that we don't stop uh, late enough through a lot of the outreach that we've done, but currently on SoCal, the last bus runs around midnight and starts around a little bit before six in the morning. Uh, and that's, that's the same in this plan going forward. We're not changing that. What we are doing is adding a little bit more frequency later into the evening. So there'll be more, more buses later into the evening around nine o'clock. Um, in terms of the noise, the new buses, the electric buses and the hydrogen fuel cell buses are essentially silent as they operate. You, you don't have the diesel engine, you don't have the exhaust. Um, the hydrogen fuel cell is essentially an electric bus, but it's powered with hydrogen onboard the bus. Um, so they're, they're very, very quiet vehicles. And as Director Koenig mentioned, we're going to be purchasing the largest number of any agency, and so we'll reach about sixty percent of our fleet um, within the next two years, probably. Yeah, the hydrogen buses are from a company called New Flyer. Uh, I'm not exactly sure where they're manufactured. The electric buses are from Gillik, they're manufactured in the Bay Area and Hayward.
Great. All right, let's take some questions from online. Jim, if you want to call on people and unmute them.
All right, Alex, I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Hey, hey guys, uh, hi Manu. Um, thanks for uh, for hosting the town hall, especially on this subject. I think it's really interesting. I have a couple uh, comments and then some related questions, I guess. First couple of comments are, I guess it's also a question. Um, you know, when I've read about some of these upgrades um, in paper, um, especially with like the hydrogen buses. Um, I think it's, it's pretty amazing. It seems like this is, or maybe you can confirm or, or uh, restate maybe what I, what I've read. Uh, but this is like, this is a really unique rollout, either in the state or, or the country. Um, we're one of the, or I know, I know that Grant was um, was uh, pretty impressive. Um, but uh, I, and I think you guys have done a really great job uh, communicating um, to uh, to all of us. Uh, but I just, I think um, you know, even stressing uh, even more, um, you know, that, that Santa Cruz is really uh, showing leadership on a real, you know, next-gen transportation network and maybe, you know, qua- quantifying or putting it in context, you know, how, how, you know, compared to other cities in the country, like, you know, compare, compare, you know, what we're doing to, to them or, or the state. Uh, so I think, you know, that, that's something I'd just like to hear a little more about, and also sort of a suggestion, because I think um, you know, the more you keep hammering on that, the more um, you know, I think uh, you know, uh, impressive uh, and, and uh, um, you know, get more people to ride the bus, I think, when they can really look at it um, as not, you know, uh, you know, um, uh, you know, a, a, a undesirable transportation uh, option, but really like this is, you know, this is the future here. Um, so that'd be really cool. Uh, I'm really excited to see the hydrogen buses. Maybe you could say, you know, besides the hydrogen, like what else these new buses are going to have that, that might um, or you're planning that might uh, you go along with the hydrogen uh, aspect. I mean, are, are they going to be different inside? Can we make them different inside? Can we make the experience of hopping on a hydrogen bus notably different than hopping on uh, an old tool bus? So I guess that's a comment question, and then maybe you could also talk about um, uh, how we're paying for this. I, I assume um, that we're not anywhere close to running uh, this system at a profit, given just the size of our community. Um, but maybe if you can say like what that looks like in terms of how much we're spending, how much we're bringing in. Uh, and you know what, um, if we doubled usage, would that get us to profitability? I mean, would that matter? You know, does that let us? If we were running at a surplus, could, could then we, you know, dramatically expand service and options? So anyway, it's a long question. Um, but good work, and maybe you have some comments on, on my comments. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, let me, let me see if we can address uh, the three parts there. The first was uh, if we could kind of do um, a comparison of how Santa Cruz Metro ranks up against other cities in America, or maybe even around the world as far as and, and I would defer to our uh, experienced consultants, Jarrett Walker and Associates, as far as what those metrics might be, whether it's um, you know, age of fleet, uh, no percent zero emission buses, or like um, you know, uh, excessive places you can go or distance you can travel within thirty minutes or some of the, whatever, whatever those comparables are, um, you know, to look at whatever it is, San Diego versus Santa Cruz versus um, Milwaukee versus New York or something. Um, so noted, we'll, we'll look at that. Um, the second question was about what the hydrogen buses look like on the inside. Um, I have not been inside one. I don't know, John, do you know if there's a, a different layout to any of them that?
The layout will
sorry, it's just a
The layout will be fairly standard. Um, one difference uh, that we're targeting is all door boarding, especially at UCSC routes. So people will be able to board. There'll be a wider back door. Um, so that'll be a, a fairly significant change, and the new bus stops will be level boarding. So you, you just kind of get on, roll on, whatever. Um, and there'll be Wi-Fi, but in terms of like the configuration, it's pretty standard.
How does ticketing work from the back doors? You just tap in with your phone or like?
Yeah, so one thing we didn't mention is part of that Tersip grant funded the complete wide implementation of contactless mobile ticketing on every bus that Metro operates. So either mobile, contactless credit card. And so the idea is that there, there would be validators at both the front and back doors, just like Union San Francisco, where you tap and board.
Great. Okay, and your last question, comment, Alex, was about funding. Uh, so this is like a pop quiz on Metro's budget. So um, as a director, I should know all the details. I want to say Metro's budget is about fifty-four million dollars annually. Uh, John's nice, I'm close enough. Uh, um, and you know, really only twenty, like somewhere between seventeen and twenty percent is paid for by fares. Um, and that's better than average for the nation. Um, so uh, it's, you know, that's, that's called the fare box recovery ratio. Um, of course, we do also have contracts with the university uh, and with Cabrillo College, um, and those also are real significant pieces that drive revenue, but I believe those are incorporated into the fare box recovery number. Um, they are. So um, really, we have to, I mean, the service is publicly subsidized uh, through other means, including um, other, we actually have, already have a dedicated sales tax for Metro in this county of half a cent. Um, and then we get other um, state and federal monies that, that keep the service running. So I think that, I mean, certainly it helps if our, our fare box ratio could increase. Um, I don't know if we have a target that you want to speak to. Um, but um, you know, and we become able to more attractive as far as being able to pull more funding. Um, if we have a, I think, a better fare box recovery ratio, or even like just higher ridership overall. Um, so that can, you know, one would just, as far as positioning the agency. Um, but we can't ever hope to be, you know, fully sustained or profitable from ridership. John, anything you want to add?
Yeah, just, I would say profitability is never the goal. It's financial sustainability, and we're actually um, punch above our weight class, so to speak. We're part of a category called Small Transit Intensive Cities. Uh, Santa Cruz is, so we actually obtain additional operational funding uh, from the Federal Transit Administration because we meet certain goals related to fare box recovery and ridership per trip and route and per hour. Um, so, but yeah, twenty percent is typically the goal. Um, because of the measure D G, the nineteen seventy-eight half-cent sales tax, half-cent sales tax, we're actually able to count that as fare box revenue, which pushes us up to fifty percent when we go for funding. Um, so that helps us. Of course, you know, it's been almost fifty years since that was passed. Costs have gone up substantially. Um, but it's still an amazing measure that we have that we're able to take advantage of here in Santa Cruz County.
Thanks. Jamie, you want to? Call on whoever's next?
We do not have any other hands up at this time. Online participants, if you would like to ask a question.
I think Alex raised his hand again. If he has a follow-up question, if there's no one else, that's fine.
Okay, here we go, Alex.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I did have just a, a quick follow-up question. Um, uh, are, are either of these route options going to add or uh, change the high, uh, Mon, what's it called? The high-frequency uh, transit stop? I know that's important for housing and planning, and then there, the, the, the high-frequency corridor as well. Uh, can you speak to that briefly? I know we have one, I guess, in the county at Capitol Mall. I mean, is there any thinking? Uh, like, how does that, how does that fit in, if at all, to the planning? Thanks.
Right, you're referring to the definition of a high, high-quality or high-frequency transit stop in state code, which then um, provides some streamlining uh, for uh, housing developments in the area. Um, I want to say it's it's for, uh, it's defined as every fifteen-minute service or planned fifteen-minute service. Right, so wherever you see the red, but then I think also where there's overlap of a number of routes, so I mean, because
Right, right.
They'll, would still qualify because it's got uh, both the two and the three going through it, and the fifty-five and this alternative A that you're looking at. Um, and the Watsonville Transit Center. Um, and then, you know, right now, the blue lines are, you know, every thirty minutes. Um, but with, I, I mean, I think that the whole point of the future-looking map will be to see how we can get more of these lines uh, to be purple or red. And so um, more stops should come online, so to speak, uh, as a result of that. Um, I mean, of course, generally speaking, as far as the housing element goes, the county's looking at right now as far as where to uh, build more housing in our community, we're certainly I mean, there's not a whole lot of space between the mountains and the ocean in our community, if you haven't noticed. Um, and so really, we are looking at pretty much everywhere you see uh, a metro route right now. Um, because that will be uh, you know, just, just the best opportunity sites.
Great, okay, thank you. Um, that's really great. And one final, just brief comment is, I think um, it was very, very interesting, a couple of weeks ago, um, the article about uh, Santa Cruz County and aging and our demographics being uh, one of the top in the state, if not the top, I think, for um, increase in proportional uh, over sixty, seventy, eighty upcoming years. Um, I would just really uh, hope you guys can um, raise that as part of your planning process of, of how we can um, accommodate, especially seniors, getting them, getting, getting them off the road. Um, uh, in, in better options. Um, so, so they want to stop driving and, and want to use the transit network. I think that's really important for us to think about over the, over the upcoming years. So anyway, thanks. Appreciate it.
That's Alex. And, and yes, uh, we, Santa Cruz County got the distinction of having the fastest uh, being the fastest aging county within the state, so that um, I can't remember exactly, but I think our sixty-five-plus population increased like eighteen percent uh, between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. What another question back here, I think, and then, yeah. I think he was first. And then
I forget if it's forward or back, you had a slide on the um, the person living in the in the city. Yeah, that's the one. Um, I ride my bike to and from different bus stops. Are we doing anything to increase bike ridership to and from specific destinations? Um, on the transit corridors, which may increase that access of destinations that we're talking about? Um, and then not only that, but is there, are we doing something to increase the number of bikes that are allowed onto buses? Because I also noticed that that is an issue going up to and from campus, and sometimes going all the way down to and from Watsonville. Is that the three uh, bike racks on the front are inadequate for the number of people who want to ride their bikes? Um, but maybe don't want to do the entire trip on their bike.
Uh, yeah, that's a great question. Um, so we, the funding that we got and one of the grants that Director Koenig mentioned actually funds two new bike mobility hubs at Pacific Station and at Watsonville. So the transit centers will have um, secure bike parking indoors. Uh, they're modeled after uh, what you might see in the Bay Area, where sometimes there's a repair shop, um, they're, they're staffed. Is, is the general idea, we'll see, we'll kind of see what the final build-out looks like, but definitely secure indoor parking to get in and out, coupled with uh, the new bike share program that's rolled out through the county. The on-bus uh, bike storage is just a lot trickier. Three is kind of the limit for the for the outside rack, although the new articulated buses that we're getting, the sixty-foot buses, uh, we can dedicate potentially three more spaces if we remove some seating right by the back door. So that's something that we'll look at in the configuration of those buses, especially for UCSC routes, because we know it's always a big issue. But so maybe six at the most, but it's a doubling, so.
You have another question?
And will you get a discount if you buy a month pass?
So, so for the online audience, the question was, uh, will there be a cost increase?
So this, there's no plan to raise fare. Fares are, would stay the same throughout this, and fares would actually decrease because we're planning to eliminate transfer. So currently, when you go to another route, you have to pay again. So that, we're going to take away uh, in December when we roll out this change. Uh, the senior discount is already fifty percent, the base, so it's two dollars base, it's a dollar uh, for senior discount. And uh, yeah, there's not, and there are monthly, weekly, monthly, weekly and monthly pass discounts as well. The other thing that will happen with the mobile ticketing rollout is uh, something called fare. We'll implement what's called a fare accumulator, and so you won't have to buy a monthly pass upfront. You can just keep tapping, and once you hit that amount, it'll stop charging. Um, so that's So that's, that's the plan for that.
Great. There's no more questions? Any more questions? Same person here?
The fare accumulator, will that also count towards day passes?
Any more questions online?
I'm seeing none. Online participants, to ask a question, you press the reactions button at the bottom of your screen and then select raise hand.
Okay. Well, we've got the Reimagine Metro team back here. If you do think of other questions or want to look at the materials, I'm also happy to answer at this point any questions about things not related to transit network. Right. It will be at the end, once, once the SoCal Drive project is over. Right, so. Right, more or less, more or less across the street, there's an assisted living facility that's just broke ground yesterday, actually. So that's eighty new units. I think about twenty-three, which are memory care. So it, the, the SoCal Drive project will last, like I said, it'll break ground here within the next month or so. And then we'll go through the end of this year and into twenty, through the end of twenty twenty-four. So we'll probably start doing some community fundraising for the bike jumps in the middle of next year. And then hope to be able to begin construction in twenty twenty-five on those.
Are they ever going to put in the, sorry. Are they going to be planting trees as they promised when they, several years ago, we had meetings that they were going to put a skate park, skate park there, maybe a basketball court? I can't remember now, so long ago. And they said that they were going to be planting trees along SoCal in front of the park. Is that still the plan?
The plan hasn't changed as far as the master plan for the farm park. I can go back and talk to our parks director if there's, I mean, I think at this point, because we didn't win the state grant, we'd have, we'd kind of have to pick and choose a few things to implement. We could certainly look at implementing the street trees or, you know, other trees that are along SoCal Drive sooner, so that.
The bike ramp is a good idea.
Beautify the area, yeah.
We have a lot of skate parks in the area. So it's nice to have a bike, it's quieter.
Yeah.
Because we live directly across the street from that park in Chen Way.
Okay.
At the end, overlooking the farm.
Beautiful.
Which I hope won't be developed in the future.
Right.
Deer and fox and all sorts of animals that roam in that part of the area.
Yeah, it's, it's beautiful. Not seeing any other hands raised online, so. Okay, yeah, sure. I'll just end on the Reimagine Metro survey link here. So s c m t d dot com slash Reimagine Metro. Or Google Reimagine Metro, Santa Cruz, and you'll find a link to the survey. It's open until, what is that, next Tuesday? And you can give your input on option, alternative A, alternative B. And I think there's a few other questions about, you know, how you use the bus, we'd like to. So check it out. And did you have one final question?
The buffered bike lanes on SoCal, if we could return to that slide. Will those be physically separated from traffic? Is there a plan to physically separate them from traffic? Or is the green paint the only protection bicyclists will have on the road against cars?
Right, great question. So we're basically putting in the best bike lanes that physical space will allow. So that means that they will either be buffered, which is, there's basically that kind of strip that has the cross hash marks to add an additional foot, or in some cases, two feet of space between the lane of travel for cars and the bikes. That's where we're space constrained, or where possible, they will be protected. So particularly, for example, along Cabrillo, some of the parking along SoCal Drive is coming out there. And that gives us more space. And so we can put in fully protected bike lanes there. So, yeah, so there's actually a barrier between the bikes and the cars. Yeah.
It's not a freeway, actually. SoCal has become a freeway when it's crowded on one. Everyone barrels down SoCal. And the sheriff is nowhere to be seen.
Yeah. The, yeah, we, we lovingly refer to SoCal Drive as Highway Two, just because it does get so much use. But again, that's because there's only so many routes across our community. I mean, really, three right now, right? SoCal Drive, Highway One and sort of East Cliff. And, you know, some folks have talked, when we talk about the auxiliary lanes on Highway One, you know, some people say, well, we're adding capacity and that's a bad thing. But, you know, the reality is, we're just trying to make Highway One function better and really make it more attractive. So that rather than commute on SoCal, you know, all the way across the county, people are using the highway to do that. Because the highway really functions as both a local road as well as the highway. I mean, I know I will hop on it just to go, you know, from Seventh to Forty-First all the time. So we're really in the redesign of SoCal Drive, we're trying to make that more of a local street. Where, as you said, safe for kids, people of all ages to ride a bike, where you can have a really effective transit system. And then encourage more automobile use on Highway One. All right. If there's no further questions, I'm going to close the meeting. Thanks everyone for joining online. And we'll see you next month.